Good evening, I'd like to call this tonight's meeting of the Hampton Board Selectment Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the November first, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Hampton Board Selectment. This meeting is being recorded. Is anybody else recording the meeting? Okay, seeing none, let's proceed. First thing on the agenda is approval of minutes. And we have nine nineteen executive. Uh, I think last time we had talked about, Don made some suggestions, and we have those in our hand. Any comments from the board?
Motion to approve September nineteenth executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. September twenty-sixth.
Regular?
Regular meeting. We met with the Action Ambulance Operating People. We've talked about the Committee for the Senior Center Building Project, and we motioned for their membership. Add some of your fiber optic, talk about the shared conservation agent, and business after that.
I move approval of the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two regular session minutes.
In favor?
Aye.
We have also the executive session of September twenty-sixth, when we met with the town attorney to review status in one of the cases brought to us based on the planning board storage decision. The part you haven't read. Was that Jesse's statement or that an interpretation? I don't think it is a supplementary decision, it was just more background to the decision that was made. I think saying it's a supplementary decision would make it sound like there was a second decision, I don't think that's just strike that line. With that, I'm okay.
I move approval with the amendment, striking the supplementary decision.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not to get into detail, I do see a date mentioned about a conference. I would ask Bob that in these minutes mention there's a status conference, and he reach out to Jesse on the third, it says the third, but I'm going to bother you away. With the board's approval, Bob's out on Friday, I'll reach out to Jesse and see what the conference brought to him, okay? Okay, minutes are approved. First thing on the agenda, after minutes, the winter regulations. Annual occurrence brought to us by Highway Superintendent. Pam, Bob?
No change. This is an annual approval by the board.
Okay, you have them on the screen or feeling for sharing anything? I know, does Bob have them up on the?
I can put them up on the screen.
That's the old one.
We're going to be on our agenda as I did during this meeting.
Yeah, okay. I have it in here as well. We have these.
It's not in tonight's folder.
So we gotta go prior.
Last meeting in October.
All right, just to share with the people online, it's a listing, the understanding from the Highway Superintendent policy on relief drivers, parking ban, snow removal, et cetera. I don't see any different from prior years.
Is it the same as prior?
Out lies the responsibilities of each department if there's a snow emergency.
You know, plowing violations and stuff.
Typically, this is an FYI by the superintendent, but like an official motion showing that we endorse his actions.
I'll move to endorse Mark Langone's Highway Superintendent's annual winter policies.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and of course, you'll coordinate some of that with the chief who's online as well.
Uh.
Thank you, Scott.
This will be posted.
Actually, can you ask Mark to come in next week? If we're getting down to the close of the season, or actually schedule Mark for sometime in November, ask him what's the appropriate date after the plans close and give us a recap of what happened with the twenty-two construction season, what's left over, what's so put him on for some time. Late dawn, what is it, like, late November?
Yeah.
Okay. Next. It does, but why? Doc, can you mute?
You, me? Yeah, I'm sorry.
At least the dog's not barking in the background. Okay, Bud Green, property discussion.
I sent an email to Rick this afternoon to remind him, and I'm sorry, I'm not here. I thought he was going to be here. Rick and his uncle.
Okay, I'll give the, I did talk to Rick about this, just to get an understanding of what the heck it was. And if I get it wrong, Pam, you may have talked about it with him. So his uncle Buddy owns some property on the south side of the river, approximately behind the hardware store, Hummies, et cetera. It's landlocked, Buddy would like to clear it, as has been done in the past, back when I think Ginger Green had the property. But the only access to bring that out would be through town or land, i.e. the land trust. And they wanted to discuss that, get permission. That's, all right, okay. But without the specifics that either Buddy or Rick would bring forward, I don't think the board can make an informed decision. Hope he doesn't show up before we end tonight. He's on next week. Okay, good. Ambulance service.
The ambulance advisory committee was convened last week. And I think we focused on three items. Number one, some issues of reporting required in the contract that were not being reported according to the contract. Company agreed that that would be fixed, and that proper reporting would be done. Number two, you have in front of you a listing of days and times when the ambulance service is operating basic life support, or BLS, when under the contract, the contract does require that the ambulance that's stationed in town twenty-four seven also be prepared to operate under advanced life support ALS service whenever called upon. We did discuss why this was happening. The company said that they were struggling to find paramedics and hire them, and that they were in the process of hiring two, which they anticipated would ameliorate this problem. So I gave you the list that was sent to us by Mr. Gentile. And so that's that's where we are, and I think those are the major items that we discussed with the company. And obviously, there's concern about BLS service. There's also concern about whether the company can continue kind of service that we've had, given that the changes occurring in Holyoke and the shifting of their operations into Springfield on Page Boulevard.
The three selectmen did attend this meeting, and I think we heard assurances from the principals at Action that they would be able to satisfy their contract. They would be able to continue providing good service to the town of Hampton per the contract. Obviously, with the dropping from ALS to BLS, we don't see a consistency with that, although we are certainly cognizant of the problems with staffing, et cetera, in every industry going forward. However, our job here is to find out, are they living up to their contract? Is there something we can be doing, they can be doing, as we come into the last year? And how does this affect our potential for renewing, going out to rebid, chasing how we do it, et cetera? We do have, I think, pretty much the entire committee here. If you want to be part of the discussion, we're going to need you to come up here, because people have been, I won't say complain, but making a comment that comments from over there aren't heard during meetings, so. And I wasn't looking for deliberation, this was more, I put it on the agenda for a recap of the meeting we had last week. So commenting on that meeting would be appropriate, because A, it wasn't recorded, so there is no unfortunate neither is no video documentation of it. So if we're going to discuss it, somebody, a point of clarity might be brought forward, saying, oh, no, this happened then, and that would be appropriate, because it wouldn't be a deliberation, it would just be a comment. Okay, so I'll open it up to basically our board then.
Can we clarify something?
Sure.
This was not established by the Board of Selectmen as an official committee in the beginning. But you have made most recently an appointment, so I think we are going to be transitioning to, I mean, an official municipal committee, which means our meetings will be posted on the website and recorded and minutes kept, so it'll be treated like any other municipal board or committee session.
I have a problem with that. Because the Board of Selectmen did appoint the committee back in two thousand twenty. Motions were made by the previous administration, and members were appointed by the Board of Selectmen, so technically, they do fall under.
I had the perception that, I, I, I don't know if I agree with that, I think it was never considered an ad hoc committee. They had a space on the town website, they had.
Yeah, it was, it was voted on and
They've been posting agendas, stuff like that. I had a sense that it was a real committee.
You voted, I think, the meeting before I came here.
Turn your mic on, turn your mics on.
Thank you.
I was under the impression that that meeting was recorded, I mean, there was that owl thing for the ambulance.
Right, it was broadcast, it wasn't recorded.
It wasn't.
The last meeting.
Typically, you'll see a message and up in the corner it says, "Rec," something like that.
Two points, so, one is, it was a posted meeting, and it, you know, from what I can see from prior meetings, they were, they were all posted. I took the liberty and I sent it to the town administrator and cabinet selectman, I took the liberty of writing down my observations, minutes, if you will, and I, you know, I would like the next meeting of the group to review those minutes and approve or add to them, et cetera.
Well, one thing I think we'd like to do, based on a couple of comments during the meeting, was that we'd like you guys to elect a chair. It seemed to be a little, we were under the assumption you were chair. Well, that's it. Well, that also, I think, got into, I think yeah, well, he can't be, but I mean, you guys should convene among yourselves and do that. And I think a lot of that had to do with the timing of some of the meetings, it was hard for the afternoon meetings to get everybody there. So going forward, if you could establish a little more I don't want to say protocol, what I've been looking for here, Don.
Procedure.
Formality to the thing, yeah. Next, you'll be asking for a budget, we're not there yet, so that's fine. Do we know what I'll be?
Laurie Beth's room.
Okay.
Yeah.
Looks like she wants to.
I was to have all the people on the committee.
John, could we clarify the, the the nature of the committee in terms of, when we have our next meeting, is it going to be, is the meeting scheduled going to be dictated by the Board of Selectmen? Is it going to be initiated by the town administrator? Do you expect the meeting to act independently and just report to you that they're meeting and when, and, you know, defer to your schedule? What, what does a board anticipate on this? And, and just my earlier comment, this is, this is talking about organization, it's not deliberation, so we can do this in a nonposted meeting.
My understanding is that the ambulance oversight committee was just that, was meet quarterly, looking over the operation of the system, resolving disputes that the customers, if you will, populace might have, that type of thing. Exactly right.
Don laid out a pretty good mission statement a while back, through the minutes that I found, goals and operations that the committee should follow. I don't have them written down, but it was, I think it was twenty twenty at some point that Don had laid all that out. The goals, it's pretty good. We can find those minutes and kind of revert back to what those were.
All right, my question would be, though, going forward, as we come up to the last six months of our contract period, do we bring that, do we bring your board and your committee in to make that part of the process? Or is it strictly in the purview of the selectmen as it was three years ago, basically? You know, you guys, you committee have more of the experience of the ongoing day-to-day and the reporting, et cetera. I think where you have to share would be important.
I would think it was more of a presentation.
That's my point, so, no, no. But we need to get started on that. You know, we can't kick this can down to February, it won't give us enough time to get it ready, to talk about finances, et cetera. And as I think we're all aware, there are a couple of questions here, do we continue with action, do we put out the bid? Do we look at a municipal setup or whatever? All these questions, everything should be on the table at this point. We've gone through a three-year period. We take what we learn and see if it can be done better. Where's the status quo going?
When a cure period relaxes, they start relaxing, they start
And that may not, but that may not be relevant, per se, to the renewal thing, okay? Based on everything we've learned over two and a half years, maybe the last, you don't look at the last month or so, because that's a staffing thing. Is there something that could be done better? Is there a way to upgrade the service that helps the town of Hampton? Or should we investigate other options, which may still lean back to action down the road, so.
Awesome, very.
Jim. There, remember, there's, there's two options at the end of the contract, one is to do another bid, the other one is to take advantage of the clause that allows a one-year extension. And I believe you, after that, there's another one-year extension.
I think that's all getting ahead of ourselves.
Right, exactly. I'm looking for a, basically, a process here, we're not having this discussion tonight, per se.
And I think, since there's no chair technically officially on the board, that Bob should schedule the next meeting for you guys, and at that point, you would elect a chair and somebody to take minutes. I think that would be the proper procedure to follow.
I think it's important to remember, too, when going over and reviewing the numbers, the last two or three, two years with the COVID is outstanding circumstances or extenuating circumstances, so not to be judged by the future.
Right, and that would all be something that would come up in the future discussions, not to deliberate now with that stuff.
Right.
I think it's one thing that the, the one, the gentleman from the company said, that the first year versus the second year, why was there a redate schedule for the second year? Because of total different operation thing between the COVID year and the coming out of COVID year, if you will. So, all that, all that's part of the mix, it has to be analyzed. So, going forward, I agree with you, Craig, that we need Bob to set up something, we're coming into the holiday time, it's difficult, we understand that. We thank you for coming here, for those online, Laurie Beth as well, you know. Is there any, Bob, the new chap? No, that's the other committee. Is there anybody missing from this committee that isn't here tonight, besides the ex officio?
Heather Turcot.
Heather Turcot?
Heather, Heather Turcot, I believe.
Treasurer's not on the list.
He's ex officio or?
No, on the ex officio, it's Ed, Police Chief, and Ed, the Police Chief, and no, Cliff, thank you.
Yeah. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I might. Okay.
Have some of your candy from last night's house.
No, I just want to, I, I think the town administrator brought up three things that we discussed at the meeting. One of them was the reporting. We have all the reports from July first to yesterday in terms of performance, and, and we have all those and they're available to the board, to the advisory committee. The only thing that we're missing is these quarterly financial reports. The other issue that was discussed at the meeting was which contract they were following. There was some discussion about which contract they were following, because the board had voted at one time, that when I was the chairman, to look into revise contract, because we were deciding what to do between the fire chief and police chief. The, the week after that, the current police chief resigned, so if there's any, if there's any, was, if there was any misunderstanding or miscommunication of who they should report to, I'll take the blame for that, because I was the chairman at the time and didn't follow up on it. But I have to say that Action has been pretty diligent in providing the reports to the town. We all, we have them all going back, except, except the quarterly, so I think we're good there.
I think his concern right now is the BLS versus ALS, right?
The other, the other, the other, the other issue, so those, those two issues, and we have the BLS versus the ALS, and we know what the problem is, is that, first of all, a lot of their staff members went with Cataldo, once Cataldo got the Holyoke contract, so they're trying to replace them. Staffing is unbelievable any place, especially in the medical field, and take it from a retired pharmacist, that they still haven't filled my position, I've been out of work for a year and a half.
Your cell phone come up.
Yes, it'll go, over there, and, and if you saw it today in the paper, there's nineteen thousand staff shortages in hospitals and that in the state, they can't even, they can't even process people to get them into a rehab facility, that's, it's all behind help. So I think any contract I've managed, and I've managed many of them when I was with the Attorney General's Office, is you have to give the contractor an opportunity to remedy a problem, and I think they're working diligently on that, so we need to go there. I don't think you want to leave people with the impression that they're not getting ambulance service, because they are. They're getting the BLS service if they need ALS. Over the course of of, since July, there was, there would be two hundred and twenty-four possible shifts that had to be filled, and there was thirty-five of which were filled with BLS, most of them just in the last month because of the, of their turnover, and they're working that, and that they will, they are working to, you know, get that complete. So I think it's important that people know that if they do need ALS service, that's available, because we call in mutual aid and others to do that.
I think it's a good point, and there have been no incidents where the BLS has
And I, and I think it's important, I think it's also important to point out that from July first, two thousand twenty, to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty, which is twenty-seven months, Action handled fifteen hundred and two calls in Hampton, and their response time for all those calls was about five minutes and thirty seconds. The national, the contract says ten minutes, they're doing five-thirty, the national average is, they asked for eight minutes, and they're doing well below that. And they're doing mutual aid, too, they had seven hundred and fifteen phone calls, and of seven hundred and fifteen responses, and of those, there was only sixty-one that were out of the ten minutes, so, so I think they're working, I think we got a good I think it's a good outfit, and they're working hard, and I think we need to give them the time to see if they can remedy the situation, and then decide from there where we want to go. If they can't remedy it, well, they can't remedy it, you know what I mean, they gotta do something else, but if they can, I think we gotta at least give them the opportunity. Yeah, it's seventy dollars, it costs, it costs the average, it costs, there's five thousand people in town, it costs it costs seventy dollars a year, it's a, it's a per capita of about nineteen cents a day.
And when
And remember, we never had, we haven't had ambulance service in town for many, many years, we always had to rely on mutual aid. And when we had the contract with East Long Meadow and AMR, AMR was based in East Long Meadow, and was taken in twenty minutes to come out here in two thousand.
Right, but we had a contract with AMR.
Yeah.
Didn't have one based in town.
Right, it took, you know, as you know, their time became longer and longer, when the contract ended with East Long Meadow, it took even longer, because they're based in Springfield. And when, then the town administrator, Mary McNally, talked to them over there, AMR said, yeah, you could have BLS for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or ALS for a million, you know, it's stationed in town, you know, so.
All right, so, Bob, what do we want to do for a date?
Before we go forward, I mean, I'd like to have a moment to speak, because I've had a lot of thoughts on this as well. And instead of just speaking off the cuff, I kind of wrote all my bullet points down and put them out, and a topic to kind of keep me on track. So I'm just going to kind of read off this paper here, and so since our last oversight meeting on October nineteenth, Action has been ELS for a hundred and seventy-seven hours and fifteen minutes. I asked Anthony Gentile about calls of mutual aid rendered to other towns, and he stated that mutual aid requests have decreased as well. So it appears that we're just getting out that we're starting to become more of a BLS provider in town, we're not relying on Action as much. And that's going to hurt their numbers with reimbursements down the road. You spoke about the constant ELS service recently from Action, and how it's a violation of our contract. And technically, it's grounds of termination on the contract, so we have some options to think about. When I mentioned that contract agreement violations at our last ambulance oversight meeting, there really seemed to be no immediate solutions from Action to meet their contractual obligations. Their staffing shortages were mainly the site for the reason of not meeting ALS service. I don't think they're being proactive enough to resolve their shortcomings, and this could have a direct impact on the town quality of service that we are providing for our residents. On that note, it should be noted that other emergency medical response companies are making an effort to be proactive, such as AMR, just hired thirty residents to train in their twelve-week program called Earn While You Learn Program. And if you do a quick search on that, you're going to see that this program is very successful in recruiting and maintaining EMT professionals. Per our contract with Action, they had to list their core rechecked individuals, and they listed five core checked individuals who service Action. So my question with that is, are they running a twenty-four-seven ambulance service with only five individuals in Hampton? That's concerning to me. They also stated that their backup ambulance is located on Page Boulevard in Springfield, and this location is a distance from Hampton, and will increase call time response if the need is, arises for mutual aid in the event Hampton needs a backup, so that's a long time in a backup situation. Now, with that said, our current fire department has sixteen EMT-level technicians, four of which are paramedic certified, and three more will be paramedic certified in the next twelve months.
None, none of which are full-time. They're all on call.
Correct, correct.
We only have one full-time EMT. Gee, we only have one full-time EMT? And doesn't the application say that they need to be certified EMTs before they're hired to get a within year? So you're not requiring your full-time people to be EMTs? So you're not requiring your full-time people to be EMTs? But there's no one in the course now. No full-time person in the course now. Right, so, okay, so, so if, so if, if an ambulance, if, if, if the town ambulance goes out and they have one EMT and one EMS person, and it's a BLS transfer, they can't transfer because you have to have two EMTs, right?
If you have one EMT, one person.
Right. So it would require more hires and. I, I'm not asking you, I'm just, I just want to know what the current situation is. The current situation is we have one EMT, ba- basic EMT, full-time. The other two are EMS. Right, you know, they're, they're emergency, you know, they're firefighter thing. Right, so if we needed to transport someone on a, on this town BLS ambulance, we would need to have someone come on call. Right, you know, because someone's on call because you've got twelve people on call, or you've got twelve on-call people that you have, they would have to come in to transport. You said we can transport ALS, but we would still have to do that intercept thing, right? So I guess my point is, you don't have the ability to do that.
We do have the ability to do that. And I believe.
We don't, how, how, you know, we don't, we only have one EMT.
This might, this might be giving a little, little over what we were just talking, we were trying to recap the thing here.
Yeah, we tried to recap the thing, and, and, and the, and the plan, and, and the thing is that they, there's, some people feel that the town, the fire department can take it over, and I'm telling you, you're not getting anything more for your money because they don't have the people to do it either.
But I think that's fine, but that's the thing to discuss, I'd like to, an opportunity, if you want to post that, we can have that discussion when they can come, whatever. Again, we can post their meeting for discussion as well. And I think it's certainly something that's fresh out. But, it's just that I don't want to say we like, hey, we got you guys in here, oh, by the way, get everything you know? No.
Here's my thought, I wasn't really finished here, but I, I agree with Don's point, and I, I, I like the, the questions, you know, stuff like this, the type of conversations we need to be having.
Right.
It's my thought, if Action can't fulfill their needs to us, I'm not saying we take over their role. I'm saying we can probably supplement as a backup. It could be our option to offer a BLS backup to their ALS coverage when they're ALS, or a BLS backup to their BLS when they're out of town.
But is it, is it, when they, don't they back it up already, when, once the ambulance leaves town, they send someone automatically?
Not automatically. It's out of Page Boulevard.
Yeah, okay, and the other one starts rolling.
That's not always a guarantee.
Right.
We're not guaranteed a backup. It's, in the contract, we are provided a backup if one is available.
And we're not provided a backup here either because they only work eight to four, and they don't work nights, weekends, or holidays.
We don't have any.
So that means the person would have to leave their house wherever they are, and they come quickly, don't get me wrong, the fire department is always Johnny on the spot. And get the ambulance and then go to the thing, and isn't that a delayed response time?
It's gonna be no more delayed than it is coming from Page Boulevard, right? And now we're offering a service to our residents locally. Yeah, it would be more beneficial to us in the future.
But this is what I was saying before, are you wrapped up?
Yeah.
Okay, no, no, I'm saying this, this is what I was saying at the get-go. These are the things we need to explore, A, for the rest of the contract, or B, as a new contract. Don, you brought some good points, Ed had some good answers that unfortunately, nobody can hear because he's away from the mic, so that's why I think a more substantive discussion on the agenda. So everyone knows what's gonna happen with people around is the way to go.
All right, good. The only point I'm trying to make is, we're trying to find solutions, I'm trying to provide a solution, and in term, if we can at least provide something Monday through Friday, and we have personnel and staff as a backup, because now we have those people there readily available.
Yeah, and that's something we can just.
Something we can discuss.
One comment, that our, our ambulance that they have now is we don't have a vehicle to even provide that, and my concern is the cost of the taxpayer, because we have a thirty-five-year-old vehicle.
It's certified.
It's fully equipped.
Fully equipped, it's got a stretcher, it's BLS certified, state certification.
Yep.
It's a liability to the town. It's a liability to the town.
Same thing.
You know, that.
I think we're getting over our skis on this.
Yeah, yeah, now we're getting into debate.
Jim, that's a good one.
Should be part of the meeting.
That's good, Jim, as winter, as winter approaches, you use the ski analogy.
Getting over our tips, right, so it is.
So again, let's put this on for more, you all vibrant discussion, but where everybody can come into, we'll get more mics, the whole thing.
We'll, we'll continue to have the Oversight Committee quarterly, which would be in January.
This kind of discussion that we're talking about, the Dad just asked, it has to be certified every year, and I believe it's every three years that has to be certified. Dad asked if it had to be certified every year.
Every two years.
Two years.
Can I, can I clarify what, uh, Bob just said? The, the quarterly meetings are, yeah, in the contract. Uh, you're, you're, and you were, um, suggesting that the next meeting be a selectmen's meeting, but also a posted ambulance meeting at the same time, ambulance committee meeting at the same time, correct?
Right, I would just say, back to what Bob said, the mandated meetings are quarterly. I don't think there's anything that says the committee can't be more often if they want to, and that may be because you brought up some questions about the contract, if you guys want to organize your own meeting that's posted, et cetera, knock yourself out. You know, your volunteers, if you want to have, not wait till January to discuss some other things.
Well, he's got to have the first one so they can get a chair.
Right. So I think rather than waiting till January to call that next meeting, I think that should be worth with, if you will.
Bob, just for scheduling purposes, um, and you don't need to involve me if, if I'm not around, but I'm going to be out of town from November nineteenth to December seventh.
No, I'm thinking.
Why?
I'm kidding.
A decent amount of time before the Christmas holidays and a decent amount of time after the Thanksgiving holiday would be the time to put it on the agenda here.
And that, that might work out, like I say, you know, you're through the Thanksgiving thing, everybody's got something going on. And you're back on the seventh and something in that second week of December might be, and that gets you prepped up for the January meeting. And possibly, I throw that out there as, you know.
Since everyone is here, the chair decide what we're doing, uh, we have a meeting scheduled for the fifth, and there's one on the twelfth. How about the twelfth?
Of November?
Of November.
Or the.
November or December.
It'll be a Monday.
Oh. That's fine for the whole discussion. But I'm looking for also you guys to set a date, have a chair of the whole thing, Jim, you're away when, leaving one seventeen?
Leaving, well, early in the morning, early the twentieth, so wait, basically the nineteenth, I'm gone.
Okay, well, if you guys could like have your little organization meeting before, then that would be good. I know that, but I mean convene among yourselves before you leave here, what's a good date for you all? We don't need to be there for that.
Anytime before the nineteenth.
Working out with you all and Bob. Yeah. But again, I do recommend six o'clock or later, we talked about that before, I mean, we see Lori Beth having to be online, you know. I know sometimes those five o'clock ones were tough for those that can work to get to.
You want, you want to set that now, Bob?
Tuesday, November fifteenth?
Yep.
Sixteenth?
Wednesday the sixteenth?
Sixteenth of November, it's a Wednesday.
That would be great.
Okay, there's.
Sorry, that's sixteen.
That's your ambulance meeting, right?
Okay.
And then we'll see you guys at a later selectmen's meeting.
Six P M, here in the town hall?
Yes.
Or outside.
Around the tree.
If the town halls lock, you know.
Before the lighting, so don't worry.
If it's cold, you're gonna provide us some barrels, we can throw some wood in there.
All time.
It'll be cold here.
Although.
Okay.
All right, so the next meeting of the committee will be on the sixteenth of November. And, uh, we'll have on the agenda further discussion of the items here, but most importantly, election of a chair. And address the whole issue of minutes. Obviously, I have a vice chair as well.
Be- before we go on to any other thing, may I just ask one question based on our meeting from, um, the last meeting we had a week or two ago?
Okay.
All right.
We, I asked if the fire chief and Action and our part-time medics would be willing to be hired by Action on a per diem basis to fill the gap until they can get their staffing done. Was that brought up to the fire chief or to our medics as to their interest in doing something like that? Because Action sounded like they would be willing if everybody else would be. And this is not running through our own rescue, this would be using our personnel that are off-duty and in town to backfill when there's a need, at least temporarily.
Ed, if you don't mind, can you come up to this one and pop turn on that mic, please? Thank you. Did you hear Lori's question?
I did, so if I understand it correctly, she's asking if, um, members of the fire department be willing to backfill Action shift if need be.
Per diem.
As Action employs, yes. Yeah, that would be up to each individual firefighter or EMT medic if they wish to do that, I don't think there's any um, and anything holding them back as far as I am concerned. Um, I believe they'd have to reach out to Action, fill out an application, become an employee of, of Action.
Is that something that we can offer them or suggest to them if you are interested in doing to apply, because it's I mean, we're looking for, we're looking for some short-term staffing just to get over until Action can get their medics back on track.
Absolutely, I mean, we're here to, um, provide service for the town, so I do have a meeting with Action coming up, so I could, um, bring that up at our meeting.
Yeah, it was brought up at the meeting we had the other day, I was just wondering if, if anybody has acted on it because there was a suggestion that we'd have to talk to you and see if that was okay with you. And then put it out to the medics and see if that was something they would be interested in, I was just wondering if that had happened yet.
It hasn't, as far as I know, it hasn't happened yet, but I could follow up, um, again with Action and see, see what their input or recommendation is. I can't force anybody to do it, but if someone's.
Make them aware of the opportunity.
Yeah.
I think it'd be appropriate for the chief to do that because uh, I'm part of a group that in many ways are in a regulatory role, and I do not want to suggest to them any, any people to hire.
Yeah, I mean, we.
It'd be inappropriate, I think.
We, we have filled in.
If they talk to you or something like that, but I don't think it's appropriate for me to do anything that would be interpreted as putting pressure on the company to, to do hiring.
Right, I mean, we have, as, as Hampton Fire, um, responding to calls, we have ridden to the hospital in Action's ambulance, we've driven Action's ambulance. We are there working alongside them on serious calls and providing any extra additional help that we can provide. Um, you know, so if someone wants to help them, they can step up and, um, but again, I'll, I'll have that conversation with Action again to make sure that they.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Anything further on the ambulance?
Oh, let's get this logging operation underway.
I'm not gonna think, put off him to, so we'll reschedule him next week. That's fine, okay, we'll get a little more, maybe, we'll put a map out as well, so we ease off. Uh, let's see, Tecton.
Tecton, um.
Thank you.
I had sent to the board the, uh, copy of what was just sent to me. He is ready to move forward. And, um, uh, basically, what you have there is his agenda to, uh, be in touch with the, the public and to get basically oriented towards providing information on where things stand and, uh, what, what comes next.
Do we have a copy of that? I don't see it on the OneDrive.
Yeah.
Look at, look on the last week.
Nothing on the one.
Yeah, I didn't see it on last week either.
He gave us a copy last week.
I put it in the. Yeah, it didn't open for me. I tried, I went on, online, I did it on my phone, I did it on the computer. Logged into email and Outlook, I couldn't get it open.
A very secret document.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Password or.
What do you know?
Wouldn't click, wouldn't open.
Wouldn't open.
No. So I was looking for it on the OneDrive today and I couldn't find it either. I know we had it last week, but I don't, I didn't take a copy apparently.
Is that only me twice in, uh, August? I guess not, hmm.
Yeah, that's our summer schedule.
Yeah, even if I go into the agenda now, it won't open.
I can go through it from the screen?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is what he discussed when he was here.
Yeah.
Dialogue with the community about goals, expectations, and appetite for capital investment in the fire station. I think his argument to the board was if the board expects the public to support an expansion of the fire station, that, uh, there's going to have to be an extensive effort to reach the public, inform the public, and make sure that they understand fully what the need is prior to going to town meeting and asking for authority to buy.
And I think, excuse me, but I think from our perspective too, we were trying to set up a system that could give us some kind of feedback as to what the public and the fire department think is needed for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. Yeah, what's the role, uh, what's the, if, is, will there be expansion, what the expansion would look like, what, you know? I mean, a perfect example was this discussion about the ambulance, you know, you know, so.
So he's proposing to meet with the fire department staff.
Yeah.
Begin with, hold two public meetings, and then come with, to the selectmen again with a presentation. And, um, support is needed through a funding request.
Well, the funding.
This, this came about because, um, after the selectmen decided to go forward, um, there was a period when we didn't hear anything, so I had sent them a message and said, where are we with this and when's it going to get started?
The funding for this is where we've decided on.
ARPA, yes.
And remember, you sent that message and then he met with us and told us who laid us out.
Good.
Moving forward. So you're giving us an update, and we agree with this, this line of action, if you will.
Make it so, number one.
Wow, I am shocked. I am really shocked. Must have been late-night TV time.
We can Star Trek reruns.
Who are you gonna call? Who are you gonna call, yeah? All right, any pictures from last night, by the way, Craig?
So timetable is early November, meetings with the fire department staff. And then the next phase would be in December, public meeting phase. And then, um, public meeting number two in January. And then, um, I'm back to the board of selectmen.
Okay.
All right. Good.
Good.
So we've all agreed to it and, and, um, he's under contract, so I think the name of the game now is make sure that this thing moves forward.
Exactly, so status update every week, please, under your report, if you will. Four-way stop at Overham, East Long, on Summers Road. Why don't you like Allen Street, you don't want to stop sign on Allen Street too? You gotta turn the button on.
Do you mind pressing the mic?
Yep. You know, you've been here just three weeks ago for the election part.
Yeah, by the way, we still didn't get a robo-call. So we need that as well.
Can you just state your name?
Tina Duran. Um, do you know my address?
Why didn't that happen?
Okay.
Quickly, why didn't that happen, Bob?
What's that?
Tina was here three weeks ago, we talked about the robo-calling for the elections and stuff.
Yeah, but we have one, um, early voting day left, and that's Thursday. So maybe as a reminder, we could put that out. Just that, that is our last early voting day before election. Just that that is our last early voting day before election day on the on the.
And what day is that tomorrow or?
Uh, well, that's Thursday.
Okay. Election hours as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I mean, Bob made a point. He doesn't want it to be like people are getting robocalls daily. I got.
No, no, not daily. I I I thought we were going to have one robocall.
Oh, no, no, I mean, not just you, but I mean, you know, okay, then it's a parking wreck and then it's like we have to balance everything. But the democratic process is important.
Yeah.
So.
We did one for the special town meeting and as John said, I think we need to use it sparingly.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, people will become annoyed.
Well, like, I thought it was something that you guys also.
Be like the Medicare, the Medicare calls.
He's gonna try a different voice every time. He's doing Sean Connery next time with the accent. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, now we have Tina Duran here from. Not from the committee, just a normal citizen.
Right, from one hundred St. Paul view. And honestly, I mean, I've been in town for twenty-one years and I thought we really needed something twenty-one years ago. You know. But it is, you know, there's accidents are happening more and more. I live right off of Main Street, very close to Saint Mary's Church, and that's a that's a bad spot also. The only reason why I'm suggesting the four-way stop at at Wilberham Road, Allen Street. And East Long Meadow Road is because it's a logical place. You can easily add two more stop signs and possibly lighten the traffic. That's heading towards Saint Mary's Church, the Shell Station, and the Village Food Mart. Very difficult to get out of that intersection. Many people, myself included, at times during the day. I'll pull into the Village Food Mart and go to the far to avoid that little section there. Yep, I'm gonna admit it, okay? But you know what? Years ago, when I moved to town, I remember being downstairs and I went, gee, you know what? We could really use a traffic light and Eva went. Like this, like, there's no such thing as a traffic light in the town of Hampton. And you know what? I agree. We're a nice, small town. We don't need any traffic light here. But we could really use a little help. And in that conversation twenty years ago, the police chief then had said to me, oh, I just cut through Saint Mary's Church. So you know what? It's it's many people in this town that will try to avoid that intersection to avoid. You know, a possible accident. And I mean, I've tried calling the police department to see if I could give you some statistics over the past year.
We just got some into that.
Perfect, because when I tried calling, they said that I think you had requested it. Well, just over the past three weeks, seen two or three accidents right at Main Street on that intersection there. And you know what? I don't know how many accidents you have over the past year, but how many accidents were close? How many were close calls that didn't happen?
Well, I mean, it's a thing and we've had this conversation, as you know, for years and years, you know, obviously. I've been in town a while. Don's been in town a while. This guy here moved in, uh, ten years ago, whatever. But Jeff came to us and he had some numbers back then that really seemed. Over the top. He was saying sixty-something accidents, which was crazy number. Scott just came back with. Thirteen accidents in the past two years. Sorry, three years. Now, that doesn't count near misses, somebody pulling out in the next.
Okay, but are they just talking about the four-way or what I suggested? How about we should have included the Main Street?
That's 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 another thing. You know, we talked about Bob has been talking about doing a a roundabout there. Difficulties with that is there be a tremendous amount of land taking.
Yeah.
You know, and there's no way you could put it in without affecting the business on every corner.
Yep.
And that's that's the thing.
When I had a discussion with the chief today, when he came in and gave me the statistic, he said that there are far more accidents. At the intersection of Summers Road and Bain.
That's right.
I would agree with that. So my problem, you know, would be. Having been in town forever and you know the same thing. The stop sign is not going to stop traffic coming down Allen and Summers Road.
No.
Because people aren't going to remember it's there. And then you're into, you go, you go, you go, you go, I'll get it off, whatever. If you're looking for a solution for that area, you're stuck with a traffic light. In my opinion, you're stuck like you have, what's the one on Allen? Is it Allen Parker? About on the way to.
Yeah, that blinking thing?
No, no, the real one up at Allen Parker. That's the.
Yeah.
Top of the hill.
You have the ones bottom of the hill with the at the golf course and people are waiting. You go, you go, you go. Then you go the next one. It's clear who goes and who doesn't.
Are you supposed to wait there?
No, you're supposed to step on it.
Chief, you heard that, right? Thank you. But I hate to say it, in my eye, and I'm not certainly one who is pushing for a traffic light. I don't see a solution of four-way stopping solution at that one. I see the traffic light. The other one. My gosh, you know, that's the the left or right turn at the end of Main Street.
Yeah, I know. And and honestly.
I agree. I agree. That's that's that one's worse.
That is the one that's worse. The only reason why I came up with the four-way at the other intersection is because if there was a four-way. It might lighten the load and there might be a little bit of breathing space that people can get out of that intersection. That was the reason behind that, because I.
Biggest problem at the other one is the gas station. People leaving the gas station without a sense of who has the right of way going out.
Honestly, I don't see that being the biggest problem. I see the biggest problem of people coming from. The, okay, which direction? East Long Meadow Road that way because people are trying to take a left or get out and you can't because. They see people trying to get out and you have people that are stepping on it from this way. And they see a line of people and nobody even slows down to say, okay, let's go. Nothing. Exiting Main Street is the biggest, biggest problem. The only reason why I'm suggesting the four-way stop here. Is it will alleviate some of the time that people can get in and out. I just feel like it's gonna give somebody breathing room to get out.
What would be, what what would be the process?
And that's the DOT coming in.
Okay, can I ask a question? What is the big deal? Seriously, what is the big deal about hanging a stop sign?
We have to get DOT permission.
You can't put a stop sign without getting the DOT involved.
But when you ask for it, why is it that there's such an argument about not getting it? I've been here. I've been in this town for twenty-one years, like I said, and I can't tell you how many neighbors. And people acquaintances that I know from this town have said the same exact thing. And there are plenty of accidents and there's more accidents coming out of Main Street, absolutely. But there's a lot of close calls too that are that don't get recorded because it's just a close call. So do we need to really wait for something horrible to happen before something is done? And I I agree that, you know, a a roundabout coming from Main Street, I don't even know how you would do that. You wiping out the church.
No, no, you know. Roundabout was at the other corner of the.
Main Street, right? Oh.
Hamden House.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't I don't even wouldn't even know how you do that.
Either way, if there was a stop sign or a traffic light, it's still, we need to have a DOT approval on the traffic study, correct?
Okay, but I mean, to get a DOT approval if.
Or a traffic study.
If the if the town had requested it. Is are they really gonna put up a fight to to not put up a a stop sign?
You're making you're making a point, you know, that you think the the four-way stop at the Lacochina intersection.
Yeah.
Would alleviate a problem at this other intersection.
I don't know that it would alleviate the whole problem, but it would. Slow traffic down and allow people to get out.
And that's what they would be looking for. What's the end result of doing this? And they'll run their. Whatever, you know, create computers or whatever to figure out simulations if that will happen. And that's a big part of their thing. And. You know, you bring up a scenario we'd have to come to an understanding with.
Yeah.
Before I was on the board, I remember a company coming in with a like a a study. I don't think we've ever actually had a DOT study done here in the town.
We looked at the traffic numbers there. Again, same thing. We did that because, you know, we had a number from the police department that would be. Sixty-something accidents over a three-year period. And, you know, Don and I traveled quite a bit. We just couldn't see. That number of, and maybe that included close calls or something, but not.
That was Boston O'Neil, as I recall. Boston O'Neil.
Right.
Uh, out there prospecting, came to the office and said, you're having sixty-some accidents here over the period of three years.
Right.
And I remember bringing it to the board and I remember the board saying, that's preposterous. And we would know if we had sixty-some accidents over three years. So.
And so now we get the numbers from the people.
But in all honesty, are we doing a disservice just by brushing it away? Should, I mean, maybe we can tie this into the next topic, the. The mitigation funds for the casino gambling.
Well, I got.
Should we do a study? Can can we?
The right people to do something like this, I'd say is PVPC. This is what they do. They're really good at it. So Bob can reach out too, and it's not Tim anymore. I can't think of the. I know we have Ken coming in this week or next week. Don't you have PVPC, Ken Camia, and somebody else coming in? You showed me an email. For a meeting with us, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we can touch base with them and see how we go next. So. And as it is, as Craig said, since it's on the casino route that when Vinnie and I went to Boston, we had to get a route approved.
Yeah.
Okay, a map that therefore mitigation funds can be spent along this corridor.
Okay.
And that is that quarter that's state approved. So if Bob says the money that, not you per se, but other people have spent on the slot machines, is coming back to Hampton. We can take that money and use it for an improvement.
Put a stop sign up.
There you go. I don't know how many nickels that is, but by gosh, it's something.
I mean, it can't be a whole lot.
But I think.
Splitting food.
Both those intersections.
Yes, correct. Yeah. Well, it's a traffic pattern we're looking at here.
And that's the thing is like, yeah, I agree. The Main Street, but coming off of Main Street is the bigger problem. Than the other intersection.
I think.
But in trying to think of. A solution. There's no, there's not going to be any complete solution. It was literally just to alleviate.
Yeah.
It was to to give that area a little time.
If I had to look at one turn that was the worst, I would say it'd be going left off of Main Street to the south.
Yeah.
And then maybe left off of East Long Meadow up there, Allen after that.
Yeah.
The rest of them pretty much either flow or as Don says, Don says he cuts through the neighbor's yard.
At different times, especially when the high school lets out, people are letting out of work.
And go through the bank.
See, okay. Yeah, wasn't the only one. You don't, you never do anything wrong, Pam. I know you don't. All right. So do we agree?
We do.
Do we agree to disagree?
No, no, we. To move it off the back pile into the front pile.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
And enjoy that robocall. You're going to get it tomorrow.
I just figured just one left.
Thank you.
So much.
Which, well, actually, that's great because that goes right into the next topic, the community mitigation grants.
I met with the chief today and and mentioned to him that the new round of grants coming out from the gaming commission. And they're adding a new category, and that is for public safety. And I've asked the chief to take a look at their website to see if there are any. Obvious categories which would be used. They, the tilt was towards police, but perhaps as the fire chief is here, perhaps he should take a look at it also. There may be some grant funds available through this new program that would serve the town. The only other, and this new round's coming out, the only other. Option for the town would be for funding along. The Summers Road, Allen Street corridor or the sidewalk plan. You want, you want to move forward on that? I know that's controversial and we're going to be doing a sidewalk. On Main Street, but that's the only other use that I could think of looking at those categories.
With the stop sign thing, is that something that you?
Oh, we can do that. Yes, we can fund this. Yes.
At least the PVPC.
So I, you know, I can certainly ask them if they will fund. A traffic study at those two intersections. And.
When is that? When is, uh, when are they coming over?
No hurry on that. I think we.
No, no, you had a meeting, I thought, scheduled with the PVPC for here already.
Yes.
When is that?
Well, I'll talk to them then. I I did have a meeting today. In other words, you may be, you may be thinking of the shared conservation agent.
I know I saw a meeting, I had a meeting together with a friend of mine, Ken Camia, and somebody else from PVPC were coming to the town hall. You sent a note saying that, so maybe you could do, talk about that at the same time. Community solar. Okay.
Bob had mentioned the sidewalk. We already have the plan for the sidewalk down that whole corridor there.
Well, yes and no. Which which quarter?
From Centennial Commons to Senior Center.
We have two plans.
Right. We have two sidewalk proposals, two plans. And if the casino mitigation can fund that, why would we not just put that proposal in there to see if they'll give us that money too?
Well, we're talking about possibly an intersection change as well, so.
Right, but you know, I think it all goes hand in hand now.
Does go hand in hand. I think I've, I think I've shared with you in my conversation, you know, I'm on the Housing Authority Board. As a rep from Boris Luckman, and their membership really has come back to them and said, we don't think we'd ever walk down to the senior center.
It doesn't have to be just them using.
No, I got that, but that was our impetus at the beginning. We said, hey, find a a pathway. Secondly, I mentioned before that we had, Bob had worked hard at getting a a grant or. A part of the bond bill, if you will, for improving the south side sidewalk and extending it on Main Street. But the problem is we didn't do anything for the north side.
In the, in the request for qualifications, I'm going to mention that I think we have. Sufficient funding to swing around here at town hall and go as far as we can down Main Street with renewed sidewalk. One point three million is a lot of money.
Right, but I figure you came up with that number based on somebody's number. And now cement has gone up again, so. So I'm just saying, if you come back with that, perhaps as Craig has said, we're going to have increased. Mitigation money, which again is part of that corridor. We can look at that as well.
Yeah, we already have the funding for Main Street and.
On one side.
Right. We have one side, which makes it ADA compliant. I'd like to see it continue the other side down Summers. Because it will just create a further path, especially through the business district. You get people to walk all around through there. You could park in one spot and walk through the whole area. They can go over to Gary's, not Gary's anymore, sorry, and then go down to the other stores, walk around. Everything's down there and it's pretty much the center of town now. And as I've mentioned in the past meetings, I think we do a disservice by not. Cashing in, just say, on the mitigation funds. If it's available to us and there's an option to put it there, we have a plan for that sidewalk, let's just submit it and see what happens.
We can do that. I'd like to then pull both those plans back out for the board review.
Okay.
Okay.
Back on the agenda. There's no hurry. The the grant round has not started yet. And what they sent out to us was a basically a list of what they're proposing to, the categories that they're proposing. For the next round of grants so that. Uh, we can put this on the agenda and take another look at it. As I remember, this. This was prior to COVID, so prices have bought up. It was three hundred forty-one thousand to do that sidewalk on Summer Summers Road. So.
I thought, again, they both had two different prices.
Yes, well, on one side or the other side.
Right. And you got into the main, either one, both had challenges.
Yes.
And in my mind, the biggest challenge for the one project on the west side, west side, if you will, is that when you get the senior center, you get across Allen Street.
Yeah.
And one of the busiest areas.
Right. And the other challenge was down.
I know, whereas when we went the other side, we had two businesses. If we went the other way, we had two businesses that already had committed in the past to pay for their own sidebar, if the town ever put it down.
But then part of that plan was to go behind the the gas station, connect in with Centennial Commons.
Right. Go down, go to behind the gas station?
In other words, if we were going to put it on the east side. It would come from the senior center.
Or.
Down to Main Street.
Right. Right.
And would have to probably crossover.
It would go behind the food mart, not the gas station on the east side.
One of the things he struck me, said we could go, that might have been if we put it on the west side.
On the west side, you talked about, we could come down Cedar Road, come up higher on East La Meadow and come down that way. Right. Which does help because you're not, businesses on that side have nowhere for a sidewalk. I mean, sure, you can't, there's no sidewalk in front of Big Oak, and the gas station to be pretty hard.
More dangerous because you have cars coming and going.
So, so you're gonna get the.
We'll get it all out and.
Cause if we do this right, we could make Allen Street like Riverdale Road, get enough lights in there.
Your legacy, Don. Nice.
And we do not want to urbanize the town.
No, we don't.
Route twenty, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, no, Riverdale Road, very perfect. We don't wanna urbanize the town.
Thank you.
We don't wanna suburbanize the town. We wanna ruralize it.
So Bob, can you get those ready for next meeting? I think Craig makes a good point. You know, let's, let's put this on the front burner. You know, big stove, we can put a lot of things on the front burner. Wow.
Communities, community solar, what's community solar?
I have no idea.
Is community solar, you, you have the town hall?
The company Bob owns.
Is it, is it, is it? Is it that you have the town buildings buy something from a solar?
Credits.
Credits.
Um, carbon credits? Carbon credits. So. I thought that the town had considered it in the past.
Yeah, um, the guy.
Didn't the original Amoresco thing?
No, before that, there was a guy from Hampshire Council, and you probably know him, he's former selectman of there, there's some guy. Talked to the town about that, and we looked at that, but we wanted the PPA instead. And my understanding at that time is, it's like being a host community for solar. You can't do more than one. So that's why I went back and said, we need to pull out our PPA, see if there's a restriction on doing power purchase, if you will, at a discount.
Some places.
Right, yeah. It's like at home. You can't sign up with more than one distribution company to get a break on, oh, this month I'm using you. So I think you have to pull up the PPA, I mentioned this to Pam, it had to be seven, six, seven years ago. And let's look at the Sin Karper Agreement, A, maybe they can make, uh, the logic a little better, you know? That's not, but it has been, and bottom line, we've saved money on it. There's no question. It's just, you know, hard to figure in. And maybe it's time to kick it back out there. There's somebody else doing a better job, although with the reporter Red and the Globe the other day about the electric rate going up, you know, we may be pretty happy we got something in place already.
Natural gas shortage too. There's also community aggregation.
Diesel storage.
Community aggregation is.
That was part of the thing too.
As, uh, as an alternative to just taking the hits with the increased prices.
Yep. So, let's start with, uh, pulling the PPA out and see where we stand on that. Okay? Again, you probably know that guy. I can find the email, Hampshire Council. Yeah, Leckman up there. Okay, um, Bob, your report.
Okay, um. I was asked to bring up the tree lighting on December the fourth. Get your approval and input.
Do it.
Mine? Really? Who's showing up this year?
What day is it on?
Maybe it's been for forty-seven years, Sunday.
First, first Sunday in December, right?
Yeah.
November fourth? What in my social calendar?
You've got tickets to the game that night. Sounds good? Great, good time. Great.
Start planning.
Okay.
Okay. Our capital planning committee met on the twenty-fifth, and our discussion was the National Grid Report. Uh, there were some issues that were brought up that I think were very significant. From the National Grid Report, uh, they're going to do another one within six months. I've given them additional data today. I did send you today some of the comments, but you may not have had a chance to see them from some of the members. Uh, the treasurer was there, he made some comments, and there's some other issues. Among others, they recommended that if the town would purchase electrical vehicles, that we should buy this, uh, Austrian car, uh, which is electric and also has solar panels on the hood and the roof, so that, uh, I guess thirty-five percent of the energy that it consumes comes from the solar panels, as opposed to plugging it in. Anyway, I think we all agree that there's, there's more to discuss here, although certainly the large, the big carmakers are moving in this direction, and it would behoove the town, I think, to to also, uh, take this very seriously. Up until that meeting, the discussion tended to focus on putting, uh, a charger, which would be paid for by the state and by National Grid, at the senior center. Out of that discussion came, uh, I think, a better plan to put one at the police station, and that over time, when we trade police vehicles, that at least the police chief's car and the detective's car, starting with the detective's car, would be converted to electric EV, uh, and the charger would be there, and now that there are batteries of three hundred miles, it would, it would be charged overnight, and you'd have three hundred mile range in the morning, and that would seem to make some sense. It's also the case that other towns around us are moving in the same direction. What do we have here?
Interesting. I think I also mentioned that, uh, you might wanna put a, a station in at the school. I'd be shocked if, um, there aren't four or five teachers that have hybrids down there.
Well, that's, that's, by the way, that's happening in Springfield too. New schools are, are, are getting these charging stations. Again, ta- it's taking advantage of funding provided by National Grid and the Commonwealth, so. Uh, Blackboard Connect problem is fixed. Pam, is.
Okay. Are we still gonna find a way to put a link on the homepage that people can?
I changed that, by the way. There's a link, and it enables residents, yeah, it enables residents to, um, put in their own information. And if they're not able to do that, request that the town provide. Where are we going? On the.
And then you updated the news thing?
I updated, I updated.
Yes, all right, good.
Okay. So the preference.
If they have a problem, they're now emailing you. Instead of Bob.
So that's right.
The, the only thing we need to do is put it on, a, a link on the sidebar rather than in the news. Yeah, put it in a button there instead of. So it doesn't disappear.
There, there's, well, this brings up another subject, um, that is making the, our website
Yep.
more accessible.
I thought you took care of that.
Well, in the process of doing that, we may have to use one of those tabs.
Okay, now we can, is there a limit on them? Cause it sounds like now we have the Blackboard thing plus this, so, great.
So we may be able to add two tabs at the bottom.
Sure.
Uh, I called them today, but I don't have a response on that.
Okay.
But you did approve, uh, a handicap accessible addition to the website.
Sure.
And that's what I was, uh, I've been back and forth with them on that. There's a demonstration of that product tomorrow. So, selectmen wanna see it, I'll send you out the URL. Uh, the police department, is the chief still on? That wants to participate in No Shave November. Apparently that's something that's happened in the past, and that's, uh, a fundraising device and, uh, for contributions to charity.
I, I.
I don't know.
I have no problem with it, but I think Greg should accuse himself. I don't know, let's talk to the chief. Come on.
I was not sent other, any other information, and this is something that they would like to do. Chief? We're talking about No Shave November.
Yeah, so the, uh, Hand of Police Department's been involved in No Shave November for the last, uh, several years. Chief Farnsworth, uh, has started in our agency, and we've continued it in every November, um. We've done it, last year, actually, we didn't do it, um, but, uh, wanna get back up to doing it for, for the whole month. Uh, and a donation, it's up to each individual officer to donate. Usually it's off of, uh, home base, a donation through the military families, uh, but this year we're gonna change it up and have each officer donate, uh, to a, uh, a donor of their choice.
How's it work? You, you like, like sponsors or?
No, no, individually, each officer donates, uh, a minimum of a hundred dollars to, uh, the, uh, organization of their choice. And, um, and it just shows, uh, it shows a, uh, a group effort of multiple police departments that, uh, come together for November No Shaves. A lot of times the officers, uh, have to shave due to the job restrictions and guidelines of the rules and regulations, so.
Well, the, the Crown Act, does that fit in here as well, the new Crown Act?
So, no, um, the Crown Act is, but along the lines of the Crown Act, um, the officer asked to continue to be able to wear a well-groomed beard, goatee, or facial hair, uh, which, uh, I, I'm okay with. Uh, majority departments are around us and in the area. Uh, officers are allowed to, uh, have a well-groomed facial hair, and so our rules and regulations will change, but the Crown Act does change the Hair Act, um, which, um, as we, as we know, a location in Massachusetts, there was a issue with, um, hair that was braided that, uh, the, the, the school told them that they couldn't braid their hair, and it was a lawsuit, and the governor signed into Crown Act as of October twenty-fourth. So along the lines of the Crown Act, of the Natural Hair Act, uh, our officers asked to continue to, after November No Shave, uh, continue their facial hair, which I, I have accepted and said that should be a problem, as long as it's well groomed to my specifications. If there's any issues, then we can, I have to revoke the policy at, at any time.
Okay. Board, board agreeable to No Shave November?
Go shave November.
Yes, I am. It's, that'd probably take me a lot longer.
Great. Good luck.
Okay, the documents, uh, okay, the documents relative to the Amoresco project are there to be signed.
This is in rel- relation to, uh, sharing the lease with the tower company, basically. The tower, nice. You loved those tower people back when they were doing the radio thing.
Yeah.
Your buddies.
Next item, the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, uh, group.
Do we have to sign this or just the?
And we've done the four-way stop request from Mr. Rand. Community Solar.
Hang on, pardon me. Uh, duly authorized, they need to both the board to authorize me to sign.
I make a motion to approve John Flynn to sign the Amoresco lease agreement.
Second.
On favor.
And they have, one of those has to be notarized.
Right. I assume, I assume Eva does it for free.
She does.
Excellent.
We had a meeting today, uh, on coordinating, better coordination of development. Uh, made some progress. We're gonna resume again on the sixth of December. Basically, we're going to come up with a sign-off, a checklist sheet, uh, which apparently the building inspector already has, and that'll be used electronically. So if you wanna know where does Borrego Solar stand in the process, you can simply go on electronically, bring that up and see what permits they have already and what they have to continue doing, working on. Now, the Open Space and Recreation Plan, uh, is, uh, was updated on the, uh, two thousand seventeen. We have a lot of things on the plate, but if you wanted to, it's five years old. If you wanted to update that again, uh, there's money available for that.
What was this?
Open Space and Recreation.
Open Space and Recreation Plan. It's not old. They, 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 they want you to update it every ten year. They wanna take a pass on that. Uh, we'll talk about the grant round coming from the Gaming Commission, uh, the ADA improvement to the website. And I think there's some good news on shared conservation. Um, we met today uh, with the Ludlow Administrator. Uh, he has the documents that actually were prepared for the original combination of Long Meadow, Hampton, and Munson. And, um, he's taking those to his Board of Selectmen, and we worked out preliminary arrangements where Ludlow, being a much larger community, would, uh, take sixty percent of the agent's time, and the town would take forty percent, and that would fit right with the existing budget that we have.
Still a pretty good swing considering the size of the two towns.
Yeah, yes. And that'd be around fourteen hours for the town, and that's really what Bonnie was saying. She thought it'd be appropriate and adequate.
No, I'm just, I'm surprised to be in the size of Ludlow versus us, that we get forty percent, you know, I think a win for the town.
We're budgeted, although, uh, there's money for shared service, and we're gonna put a grant request in uh, by the eighth of November, so we may get some money to help launch another shared service. That's the report.
Conservation Commission meeting tomorrow night, Glendale Solar.
You going?
I don't know, I think so.
Bring some candy.
Want to take it home with you? Bring it there tomorrow?
Did, did you actually get anybody last night?
We did.
You don't have the lights out in that parking dog tape still going?
Well, no, I, for years and years, I rented a German shepherd and tied him to the porch. But this year, my wife wouldn't let me do it.
Speaking of German shepherds, please, no, quickly, not to get into the thing. So again, we're scheduling Mrs. Bebo for next Monday. No question. You have somebody, doesn't have somebody, she's coming in. Okay, thank you. Uh, the, the, is there, right?
I got nothing.
All right. Anything else to come before the board? Seeing none, I can't, a motion for.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor. I give you the senior guy the chair.